Welcome, everybody, here to the Reno County Commission's special study session on recommendations for fire mitigation and management in the county. There's a lot of people here today, and I think we certainly want to give time for public input and comment today, as well as staff and stakeholder comment. And I might work here with the Commission for a few moments to define how we're going to do that. I'm thankful it's raining today, given the amount of firefighters here, so thank you all for being here. Commission, I believe, and Randy, I think our emergency management director, Adam Weishier, is going to present.
That's correct.
That you're -- you're going to do that? Okay. So, I think what we will do, and Adam, feel free to, you know, call an audible here if you want to bring different stakeholders up to the conversation. But, Commission, if it's okay with you, we'll have Adam present a summary of the report. And it may be well to allow the Hutchinson Fire Chief, the Sheriff, and perhaps District Fire Chiefs to make comments as well. I don't know if, Adam, if you feel like there are others on staff, but do you feel like that's a good way to do this?
Commissioner, my idea is kind of break these out individually. So go through and email the history, and then, once we get into zoning, give a brief overview of the zoning, and then call our zoning experts up to --
Okay. So zoning would be part of that, too. And then, do you -- the Commission want to take public comment after that? Would that be appropriate, after staff and stakeholders? Is that okay? Okay. Okay. I think we'll do it that way, Adam. So, Adam, if you want to come up, and I'd remind everybody to state their name and position or address, if you're a citizen commenting today, so we can have it for the record. Adam, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Weishier, emergency management director. I appreciate everyone taking the time out of their day to talk about this today. Kind of plan on this being more of a discussion kind of item, really kind of informal, get some ideas out there, and hopefully have some course action here and forth. So, all the way back in a Commission meeting in May, the Board of County Commissioners instructed us to coordinate with various organizations to come up with a plan to coordinate and mitigate the wildfire risk of the community. This would be on the high-risk areas of the county, and really, the Board just wants to know how to get along with them. So, on August 4th, we met with the Kansas Forest Service, U.S. Range Land Management, Reno County Ag Extension Agent, the County Planner, and the Hutchinson Fire Department to start this discussion. And during those discussions, we decided to start meeting monthly on the first Wednesday every month, and it includes some outside partners, too. So subsequent meetings included the Reno County Sheriff's Office, the District Attorney's Office, and the City Hutchinson Planner. We discussed several ideas, not limited to zoning, education, taxes, and fuel breaks, and enforcement of the county's planning regulations. So, give a little history. Back in 2009, when we completed the county's mitigation plan, the Kansas Forest Service Prevention and Specialist completed a community wildfire hazard assessment report for the county. In that report, the 26 communities were surveyed, and 10 communities were given a hazard, a low hazard rating, seven communities a moderate, and nine communities a high hazard rating. The high hazard ratings were east of Kent Road, south of Ford Street, Ford Street from Obie to Mayfield, 30th Street near Sand Dunes Drive, Prairie Dunes area, the Woodlands community, 30th and Invers, Flinners area, Blue Springs area, Rolling Hills, and the Highlands. The report was done in 2009, and there are several areas that are now at risk that weren't discussed in the document. Data from USDA and NRCS shows that Reno County is losing the battle against a woody plant encroachment causing the high fire danger. While there are many ways to mitigate the risk of wildfire, the most successful would be prioritization of fuel reduction. We've contacted the Kansas Forest Service, they're represented here in the back, to complete a new report for us, and I believe we can start working on that soon. Zoning, so our first topic's going to be zoning. The professionals that spoke in length about this are County Planner Mark Von Achen and City Planner Ryan, can't even say his last name.
Hit block.
So, some of the issues that were discussed are the two-to-three acre parcels, and when someone purchases less than 10 acres of land, they often do not have the ability or the know-how to properly maintain their property. Current regulations allow property owners to split their land one time without plating the land in subdivisions, or almost six years into those regulations. If there's a violation of those zoning regulations, homeowners will get a letter in the mail, and the county will take them to District Court. This process has been successful two times in the past. I'm told it's a very long, cumbersome process to get into District Court, and an alternative code court could be looked at in the future. The county also established a new zoning district for wind regulation. The county could adopt building envelopes with parcels that are smaller than 10 acres. These envelopes have determined areas where structures can be built, and this would only apply to the new parcels. It would not apply to those properties that are already developed or established. The county could seek reducing density by increasing the numbers of acres required to build. Right now, there's a three-acre minimum for new construction on a parcel in the currently zoned area of the county. A three-acre parcel, in our opinion, is too small to place a structure and have an adequate amount of dependable space. In the City of Hutchinson, there is not a requirement for a subdivided property to put in infrastructure before the property is developed. Often, the property owner will allow the property to become overgrown. There could be a revision clause put into their regulations, so they require the developer to put in roads, water, or at a minimum, a fire hydrant, and electrical frame once the plating process is completed. Final option would be an extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction, or ETJ, which can grant a city up to three miles in city limits, but property owners would be required to abide by the city zoning regulations. Currently, the City of South Hutchinson, Nickerson, have a three-mile ETJ, while the Cities of Bueller and Haven have a one-mile. This would be a key recommendation for the City of Hutchinson. We do want to note that zoning regulations cannot go back in time. We can't force someone to comply with the current regulation. A large focus really should be on education and building potential fire-wise communities in the county. With that, I'll ask if Mark has anything on zoning, or if the Commission has any questions about zoning.
My comment would be that what applies in one area of the county, we are a large county, may not apply to another area, or may not have the same needs as another area.
Mark, do you have anything to add?
Mark Von Achen, County Planner, I can provide the Commission a history of zoning, if you would like, on that. Zoning started, really, in January 16, 1958, when the county zoned what was typically referred to as the three miles around the City of Hutchinson and the City of Hutchinson. The rest of the county was not zoned. In 1962 is when we zoned three miles around Cheney Lake, when the lake was developed. Other than those two things, there was no zoning in Reno County until December 13, 1989, when the county decided to add zoning out further beyond that three-mile limit and up in the Bueller area. So, any parcels that were divided between 1959 and 1989, people could do what they wanted out there with their land. One other thing of note, really, is that the county did not require any type of road frontage for those parcels until November 14, 1994, when the county adopted a resolution to require every parcel front on 60-foot of road frontage. So, what that meant was, before 1994, you could develop a parcel based off of an easement, not a public road. I think you've got to be careful about any type of new regulations that we develop, as what Adam had said, that any parcel that's existing right now would be essentially grandfathered in and not under any type of new regulations, but you also have to think about the type of enforcement that we would have with anything. So, with that, I would conclude my comments on that.
Thanks, Mark. Mark, have you studied any successful zoning strategies for fire mitigation in any other counties? Do other counties have taken the lead on this at all?
No, I have not run across anything that other counties have done, particularly in this state or even nationwide. I think it's a very difficult subject or so for zoning, to try and do it that way.
Could you look a little deeper and see if there's some counties maybe out of state that are doing that? And then, I noted a couple different times during the last fire, post-fire briefings, that dead-end roads were noted as a significant hazard. Do we have any zoning regulations related to dead-end roads today?
Yeah. With the latest incident, I can say that Sunray Ranch is one subdivision out there, but it does not go all the way up to those dead-end roads. Sunray Ranch is number two, which is a recorded subdivision plat. That was done in 1977, prior to us implementing zoning in 1989. So, all those other tracts that land out there are not part of a residential subdivision, and were most likely developed prior to our zoning, and so there are no rules and regulations on dead-end roads or anything.
Do we have any today?
We do have regulations right now today. If you want to do a subdivision plat, it would have to be developed according to our township road standards. The Planning Commission will look at that, certainly the County Commission would ultimately look at that. That plat would be reviewed by a multitude of other agencies for any kind of concerns that they would have on their end. The bottom line is, you know, they would be public roads, they would end in cul-de-sacs or T-intersections, something that a fire truck could get down and be able to turn around, a police vehicle. We would be taking into consideration urgency services when we develop subdivision plats from this point forward.
I think I would appreciate it if you, you know, make some notes. I'm guessing there's some feedback that needs to go back to our Planning Commission based on this conversation, and they could -- I think it would be great for them to study this issue a little further and bring back recommendations for us, so they'd appreciate you doing that. Mr. Sellers, do you have? Mr. Hurst?
The extraterritorial ETJs, extraterritorial jurisdiction. Does Hutchinson still have that, or did they drop the ETJ?
Hutchinson does not have extraterritorial. They have never acquired that. The County Commission has never relinquished that authority, so they tried several years ago, and that request was denied by the County Commission.
Interesting, because I --
They have, I've seen, not tried to apply for that recently. You know, there are certain statutory requirements they have to do, they have to come up with a comprehensive plan, and then they have to present that and request, and then the County Commission actually has the authority to relinquish zoning and subdivision control in that area and turn that back over to the city if they so choose to do that. Usually, you want to do that for your more developed areas. If you've got a city that's growing in a certain area, you would like for any kind of new development to be developed under that city standard, and so, but they have not presented anything.
That's, in my past experience with South Hutch, I found that useful, ETJ.
Yeah. The city has relinquished zoning authority, if you will, for City of Bueller, City of Haven, City of South Hutchinson, and City of Nickerson. Those are the three extraterritorial zonings. Bueller and Haven have approximately one mile, and Nickerson and South Hutchinson have approximately a three-mile, which is the limit that they can do. And then, as you annex property, then if you want, that city can apply to extend that boundary even further if they would like.
It would be interesting to me as to why the County Commission, at that time, didn't relinquish that. It'd be interesting. I would like to know that.
Can we research that? Are you going to start a list, Randy?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you for the reason why, I just, I'd like to know. Thank you.
Adam?
So, next thing we'll talk about is education. For the past few years, there's been public media about caring for the landscape, green space, proper burning techniques, and how to handle volatile fuel. Approximately one month after the Highlands fire, which was five years ago, which threatened hundreds of residents, only approximately 25 people showed up to one of those meetings. To date, this was the best one that has been attended. We will continue to offer those educational courses, but usually, we'll have more instructors show up than what we do when our citizens attend. The county could hire a consultant to educate the public about the risk associated with their home. A consultant can do a street assessment, encode each property, and publish a tool on their website as an educational tool. Each property would be rated as green, yellow, or red, and the colors would be based off the risk of property posed and to be being damaged by wildfire. They give tips or recommendations, what they can do differently to have their property rated differently. We would want that to be an outside consultant. We would not want that to be done inside of the county, just based off any liability concerns or concerns for the public that someone's coming out rating the property. So, we would want that to be a third party. We don't believe there's intentional negligence by the homeowners or property owners. This is something we've seen repeatedly, forming the belief that it's a community-wide education gap. The Extension Office and USDA, even the Forest Service, could plan more educational meetings and target diverse topics on a rotating basis, and encourage shift into growing season burning and use patch burning. We still do not have high confidence, even if we offer these on a rotating basis, there should be participation from the community. The Hutchinson Fire Department has also conducted four training sessions with homeowners and property owners in the 30th to 43rd of the CL area, which was met with limited success. Each homeowner and property owner has the opportunity to have a risk assessment done on their property. From those risk assessments, there has been some brush removals, and clearly, that's done by those property owners. With education, I'll leave it open to Forest Service, USDA, or Hutch Fire.
Chloe, I know you spoke earlier. Do you want to provide any detail on what it is your department does as far as education?
Well, it can certainly talk.
Just a minute or so, it's fine.
And the Conservation District, as we mentioned earlier, has a single employee, myself, so we're really looking to, if anything, we're going to host and we're going to coordinate events, bringing in experts, subject matter experts. We certainly participated four or five years ago, when there were opportunities for outreach. We helped coordinate a demonstration project on-site. We helped deliver information about firewise. We have resources available in the office, but as far as offering technical expertise, that is not something directly that's going to be done by the Conservation District. We're more of a facilitating entity. I would rely on other subject matter experts.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on education?
Adam, this probably goes somewhat into education, but from what I have become to understand, is that in some forestry areas, states that insurance companies have a great deal to do with not only education, but opportunities to not insure. And so, is there given any word towards finding out, maybe you'll cover this later on? And I know Chief Beer had put that in his statement, and I was just wondering, where does insurance companies fit into this?
I'll pass this off to Chief Beer. I do believe he has scheduled a meeting with some insurance carriers.
Good morning. Steve Beer, Hutch Fire Chief. You're exactly right, Commissioner. April 7th, here at 10:30 in the morning, I do have a meeting with all the insurance agencies in the City Hutchinson. We invited some from South Hutchinson, actually, McFirst of two, that are coming to the CTC for a roundtable discussion exactly on this subject matter, so we'll definitely know more after that.
Thank you. Chief, is our new fire administrator going to be online before that? Is he going to be part of that?
My understanding, yes, we'll have definitely reached out to our fire administrator, Travis, and I've given my personal cellphone, and we will be working closely together through all this stuff.
Okay, great. Dusty, you got a couple minutes of thoughts?
So, I'm Rodney Reddinger.
Rodney, sorry.
That's okay. With the Kansas Forest Service. And so, we have participated quite a bit, five years ago, with the Highlands, after the Highlands incident, and it's echoing, really, what Adam was saying, as far as trying to encourage the participation, just to get the education piece out there, and that's a big struggle, not just here, but we've done the firewise trainings and the firewise programs all over the state with similar success, even after large events. And so, we work with the Hutchinson Fire Department as well, as Adam mentioned, when we went out into the areas to do, like, onsite visits for homeowners, so you could actually physically look at a property and say, from a land management and a firewise perspective, you can take X, Y, Z steps to hopefully reduce the risk of property damage to wildfire. And it is a challenge across the state, not just in the county.
I'm Dr. Christine Sanders. I don't work for the Fire Department or the city or the county, I'm a homeowner. I had to evacuate my home about five years ago, about this time. It was the third day of the fire when the fire changed direction, and fortunately, the Fire Department held everything off at 51 Highway, but we did evacuate because of the smoke. Since then, got involved with Firewise, led a meeting at my home to try to start educating our neighbors about things that they could do. I think those are great programs, and those need to be pushed and promoted every year, especially this time of year. I have kind of a, I have a very strong interest in fires, watch all the fires when they come through. I'm the local neighborhood warden. I advise all the residents, it's time to turn your sprinklers on, or pack your things, or that sort of thing. I had friends that were out of town the day of the big fire that happened a couple of weeks ago, and we were making plans on going house to house to pull the things that you really need to pull out if something happened. So, I live near and dear to the fire. I'm in the middle of it. I am trying to do everything that I can as a citizen to create a good example. Personally, have cleared many trees. Growing up in Kansas, I'm not a tree hugger, but it's really hard to cut down trees. But the cedars don't belong here, and I think that would be something really to focus on. You know, you can see the land down 30th. Many neighbors have cleared out their land, but not enough is being done. And I think the biggest hurdle is cost. It's expensive. I know that the Conservation Group was working on a grant to get a chipper out to help, but it's expensive to have someone come out and clear trees. And I know that the county was awarded a fair amount of money, one of the good things with COVID, and I do hope to see a fair amount of that money be directed on clearing out the cedars. You know, now we have a death on our hands. It's not just, you know, exciting and stressful and people being evacuated. People lost homes, they lost animals, lost pets. We had people that were injured, and someone died. And then, the whole burning ban is another conversation to have, but I think the priority is getting rid of the fuel. And I do hope that we continue to promote this. This isn't good news for Hutch. We want people to move here because it's a great place to live, not because of the exciting fires that happen. So, thank you.
Adam, you want to keep going?
Thanks. We'll move on to enforcement. Current burn resolution is 2017-12. That means we completed that last burn resolution in 2017. Section 3 states, prior to commencement of open burning or agricultural burning, the party responsible for the burn shall not notify dispatch. They do so in the non-emergent number, and they call dispatch. Dispatch asks them about 10 questions. What are you burning? What's your name? And they're supposed to start that burn within 30 minutes. Before we did this report, the dispatch personnel were not advising the caller whether they could or could not burn during that day. After meeting with dispatch and meeting with the district attorneys, one of the positive things that has already come out of these findings is dispatch will now tell an individual no, they cannot burn. They're doing that on the very high or extreme gas grassland fire index days. They are not doing that based off of wind speed. On the very higher above or for a burn ban, dispatch will tell someone no when they call Section 5 talks about, no district fire chief or its designated shall have the authority to waive or contravene the provisions of this regulation. Provided fire suppression activities supervised by fire district personnel during emergency response shall be exempt from the requirements of this regulations. So, what's this mean? This means that if our fire departments need to put fire on the ground, even if there's a burn ban in place, they need to do some back burning to prevent the fire from spreading further, they can do that because that's a suppression activity. What it also does not do is it does not grant the fire chief of that authority, or the fire chief of that jurisdiction, authority to tell an individual that they can no longer burn. We feel it's important that the fire chiefs have the authority, granted to them in this resolution, that gives them authority to say, homeowner, you can no longer burn this day when a fire gets out of control. We've had a couple incidents where fire's gotten out of control, the fire department's out there actively putting out fire, tells the individual not to burn any longer, and they go across the road and light another fire. And they wait for the fire department to leave, and they light their fire again. So, it's really prohibitive to what the fire departments are doing, and then it also makes challenging for our sheriff's office to go out and make a prosecutable case, because the fire chiefs do not have that authority. Section 6 talks a little bit about what happens if you violate the resolution, and then, if the resolution is violated, the sheriff's office will go out, make a case, and send it to the district attorney's office for prosecution. One action item I would like to take away from this study session would be a modification to the current resolution. The modifications that I would propose would be modifying the Section 3A, where it gives the dispatcher's authority to tell someone no, which they're currently doing. And then, the second modification I propose is to grant the fire chiefs in that jurisdiction to have the authority to tell someone they can no longer burn that day after they've already had a fire out of control. I do know that the sheriff's office has made a couple cases since the burn ban has been in effect, and those will be sent to the district attorney's office for prosecution. With that, I'll turn over the sheriff's office or anyone else who wants to touch upon enforcement activities.
Derek Campbell, Sheriff of county. Just to let you know that since the burn ban was put in, like, what, two weeks ago or so, I think we've had a total of three instances so far, where people have either said that either they didn't call in the dispatch or didn't know, but ignorance of the law isn't a valid excuse. Those would be forwarded to the district attorney's office, and some of these meetings, I think the last non-advisory board meeting, Mr. Hoffman, joined us with Mr. Stan to give some legal advice on how to move forward with this stuff, because ultimately, Mr. Stan in the district attorney's office is the one that's going to prosecute these. So, if you gentlemen have any questions at the meeting.
Sheriff, is dispatch the right place for the citizens to go to to advise on burning? It seems like to me that it's common knowledge in the community that dispatch is always understaffed and sometimes not as well-trained as they should be, should be looking at a different point of contact for the ability to burn. point of contact for the ability to burn.
That's a wide open question, but I've been told by people in the past that the answers from dispatch are not very clear and sometimes appropriate. And so, if we're looking at answers to issues, should we be looking at, call the sheriff?
Again, well...
The sheriff, not his department, just call the sheriff.
Sure, and as well be phoned through dispatch. So one of the last 91 advisory board meetings we have, which is, has Chief Beer, Adam, myself, among others, other jurisdictions, we came together and, like I said, under legal advice, now whether they need some education on what they need to look at prior to telling somebody no they can't burn, but we definitely need somebody with a 24-hour service or that can answer calls on weekends or whenever to answer those. And other than dispatch, I don't, unless you want to hire a private answer service to provide that information.
So your answer would be maybe more thorough training for dispatch to...
I think that would be a possibility, if that's your concern. I know that there's a website that they can go to where Adam explained to find out the hierarchy on the volatility of whether a fire is more susceptible that day or not. And I assume that's what they're doing when they go to tell somebody no, versus just calling the airport and finding the wind direction and speed. Now, there's other tools available to help make a more informed decision to tell somebody no?
Let me get into a little bit of detail about how this 2017, the policy regulation in 2017 was developed. It was developed because dispatch was having too many phone calls asking if they could burn that day. And that's one of the, just one of the symptoms, who, that was when the new, Adam, you directed, we got that new number in to call in and give information out. And that's when also, research was done with Kansas Forestry Service, it was done with several counties that had burn resolutions around the state, and it was also done with information from Kansas Livestock Association, who their members burn a lot. And from that discussion and come up with the details behind it, developed this, our current burn resolution. And as I come out and look at these descriptions here, I can see that maybe there's about two things that only needed to be added to this burn resolution. And that's the failure to provide notification of intent to burn. And the other one, which we hadn't thought about it at the time necessarily, but it was sure brought to attention this year and five years ago, is the fact that we have brush piles. And we have determined in this resolution that brush piles within 100 feet of a building is not allowed to burn. But I would suggest that we look at one of the mitigation things with regards to the burn policy, is that we have X amount of feet, and I'll leave that up to the fire departments, whether it's 100 or 150 or whatever it is, feet away from a brush pile, that it's either blackened by fire or it's cultivated. And that's the, the rest of it, as far as penalties, it's stated in there and so forth. So from my standpoint in developing the current burn policy, that's the two things that I see might need to be added to it because there's already policies in there with regard to activities that can be brought to the DA.
Commissioner Hirsch, don't you think that the request is legitimate, that if the fire department has to go put out a fire, that they got the right to tell that person that they can't burn anymore that day? To me, that's a change.
I mean, that's kind of, if a grassland fire danger, but to start another fire, if the grassland fire danger index is to that, which it was on these occasions, that that's a punishable offense. Yeah, they can tell them, no, it's grassland fire danger is there, or you don't have enough men there. You can't quantify how many people you need on a, on a grassland fire, because I just, yeah, you're right, they should have the right to do that, but...
Well, I think that's a legitimate request of this document that we should look at.
Yeah, well, that's fine, that's, I just figured that was in there anyway, given.
Okay. So, Adam, you know, you have a new staff person coming on, and, you know, perhaps they could help coordinate, you know, I don't think the sheriff wants to coordinate this, I'm sure he would if we asked him to, but we have a fire administrator, and I wonder, maybe you could look at the feasibility of an online system where you go to and you put in your report, or if it says today is not the day, you can't burn, then there's no report to be put in, but that's just a suggestion. I sense the fire chief wants to speak on some of this too, I would guess. I don't know if you want to just finish your other points and then let...
I'll touch on just a little bit about the controlled burn stuff. So back in 2017, when we, when we researched all this, we went pretty far and wide, and the grassland fire index was really the best thing we could come up with, and it seems to be working. The grassland fire index, it usually comes out that day, it doesn't change, you can kind of project it for the whole week, and you have an idea what good days are to burn. So we wouldn't want to, we wouldn't want to change grassland fire index recommendation at all. We also looked at several different agencies to take these controlled burn reports, we looked at secretaries, we looked at third-party call centers, we looked at online databases, and the most feasible thing for our community was to make them remain in the dispatch center. On some days, they're getting upwards of 120 calls a day for controlled burns, so it would be quite an undertaking from sunset, or set up to sunset for someone to take that on. I would, one of the goals of the fire administrator, he starts on the 28th, I do want him to start researching an online process where it's a permitting process. So someone has to physically get online, go through the, read the regulations, click a box that says, I agree to these regulations, they get issued a burn permit for the year or for however long the current resolution is in place, it's kind of up in the air right now, but do some research and figure out how we can get some of this online, so when they call in dispatch, they can get a permit number, and dispatch knows exactly what they're burning, where their address is, et cetera. And if we do that by fire jurisdictions, that could also help with doing some of the burn ban issues that we deal with. What they deal with in District 2, District 3, New York, up in the big urban wildland interface areas are completely different than what Chief Graber deals with down there in Pretty Prairie. So we want to, doing a blanket burn ban for the county isn't always the best option, and I think doing a permitting process could allow us to target certain areas during these high-risk seasons. So we'll move on to the next section, I just have a list as other. The resolution's changed a few times, obviously, the same property owners that follow it, continue to follow it, and the same ones that cause problems continue to cause problems. We don't want to put a whole bunch of regulations into that burn resolution that is causing issues for the individuals who are currently burning directly. At the time of this report, none of the large fires in Reno County have been caused by controlled burning. That obviously changed in the past month or so, but this is the first year since I've been here, since some of the other people I've talked to have been here that they've really dealt with these burn pile issues and things getting out of control. What I was told is one of the property owners started stacking these burn piles in 2015, and this was the first adequate snow we received since 2015 where he felt comfortable to burn in his brush piles when they got out of control. The mitigation of volatile fuel needs to be the county's priority. Recently, the Hutchinson Fire Department looked at over 20 years of fire activity in Hutchinson and Fire District 2. By examining their areas, they've burned in the past years, they've chosen to burn off right of ways, it could be hinge points and potentially stop fire. In the past two years, they've burned over 20 miles of ditches and plan to continue burning each year. While this is a good starting point, our volunteer districts do not have the time or manpower to make this an effective strategy throughout the whole county. I have spoken with one of the Bueller fire chiefs, and I believe in next year, they're going to try to start burning some of their area and offer like a Saturday training to some of our volunteer firemen to come out there and start learning how to safely conduct some of those burns. So I do think that that mitigation strategy will be implemented wider across our north and northeast part of our county. Another recommendation is for the county to come up with a funding source, a tax incentive to help individual property owners do an energy. This would allow residents who own smaller parcels of land to contract with someone to mitigate fuel load on their property. This could be mechanical removal, controlled burning, or both. By helping the property owners will save money compared to the hundreds of thousands of dollars we spent on wildfire response this year alone. After 2017 wildfires, most of the property owners in the northeast part of the county had the opportunity to make progress on their properties and chose not to. Usually after a large wildfire comes through a community, there's also mitigation dollars that come on the backside of that, meaning there's a 75-25 cost share. 75% will come from the federal government, there's a 25% local share. And to date, I'm not aware of any large area that's received those, I know some individual property owners have, but like the city of the Highlands, they didn't take advantage of that grant opportunity.
What's it called?
What's the grant?
Volts Grant, called.
FEMA, that would work, yeah. Fuel mitigation, fuel mitigation grant.
Is one of the issues with that, that it just sounds like it's kind of, it's competitive, there's limited dollars, and it takes a year to, is that...
Like, Dusty, Rodney or Dennis, could you speak about the grant process?
What was the question?
I'm sorry, the, like, I've heard of that program before, and it sounded like it was, like, there was an application process and it's competitive, and, you know, certain, you're not sure whether you're going to get it, and then you have to wait a while for it to be approved, and there's just some barriers to where I think people are not as incentivized to apply for it, is that true?
Well, Dennis Carlson, Kansas Forest Service, I think that's a different one that you might be talking about. I know within, after the four-county fire in Hayes, the federal government has released mitigation funds that can be used, and it is a match, probably what you're talking about. Certainly, you can't have federal match, you know, federal funds to federal, so 75 federal, 25% at local match on that. And that's a lot, that's going to be more for fuel mitigation projects, which may be like fire breaks, and those that'll benefit, you know, much larger areas also.
Last thing I have for you is just an example of something where the fire departments dealt with when there was a control burn that was out of control. The homeowner was told not to burn anymore unless she got more people on that burn, and as soon as the fire department met, the homeowner asked her neighbors to help. The fire got away again, and the fire department was being called out. The homeowner didn't violate our resolution that was currently in place, because again, the fire department did not have the authority to do that. Therefore, the sheriff's office got called out to that burn, and they couldn't do anything either because again, the fire department did not have the authority to do that.
I agree.
So with that, I'll open it up for any questions or however the commission wishes to proceed for it.
Should we, should we let our chief speak? Like, chief, you want to say a few words or...
I will agree, Commissioner Sellers, if they've been told not to burn, they ought not to be able to burn, that ought to be part of it. I didn't realize that would happen.
Chief? Yeah, Stephen Beer, Hutchinson Fire Chief. Dr. Sanders is spot on, this has to start with mitigation. We need mitigation dollars, and I hope that's what the roundtable discussion starts with, with insurance companies too. We have to have some dollars to mitigate some of these fuels on some of these private lands. I got some ideas in the back of my head that I'll share at that meeting, but it definitely starts there with, along with the educational, additional educational campaigns. The better we can educate our homeowners, the better off this county and region's going to be here. I think there's one more issue that really hasn't been addressed yet too, and I'm talking to my colleagues as fire chiefs, is that, you know, we can put a no-burn ban, or they can call up on a certain day and then the dispatch says, no, you're not allowed to burn. But the prior day to that red flag day, they were allowed to burn. And I really think we need to take a look at, maybe it's three days, maybe it's five days. It's forecasted on the Kansas Forestry Service's website. We know, when we had the snow on that Thursday, and on Saturday when we started getting fires coming, we told dispatch, we are going to be in trouble on this day, we were in contact with them, we knew we were going to have issues. And so, when people are allowed to burn the day before a red flag day, it creates nothing but issues for every fire department in the county. And so, if we take even a more proactive approach, we know it's going to be a red flag day on Wednesday, starting three days, maybe it's five days before that, there's no burning, period. And that would definitely help to rectify some of the situations. And you need to understand here too, it's not the average homeowner just going out and starting one brush pile. You can have one individual start 75 brush piles in one day, 75, okay? A lot of people start up a dozen piles, 15, 30, whatever it may be. A person cannot manage that, it's right in your own, they have to manage that burn pile and be on-site to contain them issues. And so that's what we're dealing with on the front of these things, creating all these major disasters through the county here. And I agree, Commissioner Sellers, what you said earlier, we want Reno County to be a place where it's warm, it's welcome, we want to welcome people to our county here. We don't want it just to be a fearful thing here, we got so many opportunities, and Hutch is a great place, Reno County's a great place to live and stuff like that. But I think if we work together, this problem's not going away. We're going to be at this for next year, the next five years, 10 years down the road, but we have to start sometime here. And there has to be some dollars started on top to mitigation and changing these ordinances around to make them fit for every fire department and every life that is on stake every day these men and women go out and fight these fires. Because it's a dangerous game. I don't know if you seen the news Sunday, Oklahoma, by Oklahoma City, a wildland firefighter lost his life. And it can happen here just as much as anywhere else. And so, this is, this is a dangerous battle that we're in here, and we need to make some changes if we're going to be successful.
Adam, is there anybody, any stakeholders that haven't talked yet that you might point out or you might open it up?
Probably Dusty.
Dusty Tahoe, U.S. Department of Agricultural, Range Line Management Specialist. So, you know, USDA, and I don't know, Commissioner Friesen, if we're just talking with Dennis, whether you were talking about the FEMA mitigation money for fuel mitigation, like what the four-county fires doing, and like, they had done some of that down in Clark County post Starbuck fire, or talking about some of the competitive, they're not grants, they're farm bill cost share agreements through USDA, Natural Resources Conservation Service, who I work for and represent. So those are, those are farm bill programs, monies that, through a program called EQIP, Environment Quality Incentives Program, that's the primary one, where there's cost share for brush clearing. Now, that cost share is primarily grassland sustainability, range health geared, you know, livestock grazing and that end of things, and traditionally is not really backed into the situation from dangerous fuel load levels. Now, I will say that, I mean, we are, that there are talks going on amongst my colleagues and on a chain about what we could do here. But what we deal with here, EQIP's a really tough sell because you've got, you have developments, there is some intermixed agricultural land, but it's, that's going to be a pretty tough road to hoe with that current framework and the issue we have here. Now, there may be some opportunities, we certainly have the conservation resource concerns that we call them and that kind of stuff in place, we can do the planning, but the money is tough to tie to... We can do the planning, but the money is, is tough to tie to our current, the framework we currently operate under. I'm not sure is, is, is a good fit for what we deal with here. There may be some opportunities that we may kind of have to invent the wheel on a little bit. We now have a push through our agency to do, and I'm not, I'm not heavily involved with it as it sits now, but urban, what we call urban agriculture. Most people generally think of urban agriculture as hoop houses, you know, year-round grown tomatoes and stuff like that in hoop houses. But there may be some opportunity to expand what the definition of urban agriculture beyond hoop houses and maybe into some dangerous fuel mitigation. I think, you know, that would be an appropriate, appropriate page to start writing or looking at. So we are looking into that. But everybody said here, fuel is the problem. We've long since recognized this. I was here last spring, I was invited to speak in this, in this very room about the growing fuel load problem, and, and it's not going to slow down unless we do something about it. I think, and, and there's no one silver bullet answer. It's well-recognized in the, in the ecology community, and $30 million that we've spent over the last several decades fighting problems statewide, that you, you can't just throw one solution at the problem and hope for a fix. Prescribed burning is a huge part of it. We, we know, we know from experience that simply doing mechanical removal of trees without prescribed burning as a follow-up in those areas that you've cleared is, is a futile effort. I mean, a hundred percent futile effort. We've got $30 million worth of taxpayer money that went to that that says so, unfortunately, approximately. So it's, it's a combination of those efforts. And we'll say, I mean, we, we have a huge educational gap. So you have prescribed burning, so where we're burning whole, whole units, right, acres. There's brush pile burning, which is somewhat related to ag burning, but I would not call that prescribed burning. You know, that's where somebody's bringing one brush pile. There's clearly an educational gap there. I mean, it's become quite obvious lately. Burning brush piles when there's snow on, particularly, I, I, everybody remembers when, when we used to have winters in the state, we know where snow would come, and we'd have snow cover for a while. Maybe that was appropriate then. People are kind of still stuck in that, in that mindset. The mild winters that, that we experienced recently, burning brush piles during snow covers, frankly, not a good idea. And we've, we've seen that. You know, I, I, I think the thought was, you know, maybe somebody, if you had snow cover on, you could probably like, if, if you had snow cover on for a long period of time, you could probably light 75 brush piles on fire at a time and get away with it. But not, not, not the way the, the weather patterns move and the, and snow melts quickly these days. That's, that's not a good plan. But do realize that since it's going to become a combination effort of mechanical clearing and prescribed burning follow-up, mechanical clearing creates brush piles. There are other options, and, and we dabble in, in numerous ways to get rid of trees. I'm from Kansas, I'm not a tree hugger, and I'm not opposed to cutting down a tree at But chipping trees, not having a brush pile is very expensive. Not saying it's not a tool in the toolbox, it is, but it's very, very fuel consumptive, it's very time-consuming, it's slow. I, I like seeing it done, but it's, it's, it's somewhat cost prohibitive compared to cutting trees and piling them. So that's why you see trees that are cut and piled. And so as we move forward in this effort, in, in law mechanical removal and piling piles, we're going to be dealing with brush piles, and I, I think it would, you know, working from two ends, maybe one from regulatory side with, with some regulatory guidance in that resolution about brush pile burning and having a, a burnout buffer around the pile, as well as the educational side and, and some of the burn workshops that my agency and maybe facilitated through the Conservation District and working with Kansas Forest Service, County Extension, we can kind of expand scope on the educational effort for, for the public that's doing both brush pile burning and prescribed burning. More than happy to, to help fill that void in any way we can. But know that we're going to be cutting trees, there are going to be piles, and they're going to have to be dealt with. There's one other thing I was going to touch on. Well, it'll probably come to me after I leave. So, so that's kind of, kind of where we're at. We're looking into some avenues. Education gap, I think, is, is probably the biggest, the biggest hole to, to fill. You know, some of this stuff, just to give you an idea, I mean, some of the dense cedar cover out here could be upwards of, the way fuel cost is right now, I'm sure it's over $1,000 an acre to, to clear it. Okay? And then, and then you're going to have to follow up, burn that, you know. Oh, I know what the other thing I was going to touch on. It was touched on earlier by Adam when we started. So, growing season burning. All right. Several angles there. Traditionally, I think everybody, most ag producers in the, in the state of Kansas think, "Okay, time to burn, burn grass, burn the pasture," you know, do that in March and April. And, and we still see a lot of that. Growing season burning is a, is a, generally a much safer alternative. It's more effective at killing trees. It's, it's safer because you have, you have green fuel load with, within the dead standing from, from the previous growing season. You still have to have the dead standing stuff from the previous year to carry the fire. The green stuff is not the fuel carrying the fire. It will burn, makes a lot of smoke. That's one of the only downsides to growing season burning. But it's safer, it gets hotter, it kills trees with heat rather than crowning, crowning cedars out. And don't get me wrong, you can have a cedar crowned out in a growing season fire, but by and large, it's, it's a, it's a safer, more effective approach to killing trees of that magnitude. Along that same line, an alternative to burning brush piles when there's snow on the ground would be to burn them in June, when, in, in the, in the front half of the growing season, when things typically are about as lush as they're ever going to get surrounding the burn pile. I mean, there, there's a whole host of things that can change that, to, to make this a workable solution, but it's still this huge education gap that we, that we have to fill. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll conclude my comments.
Just from a time perspective, I'd like to give the commission some time to, you know, discuss some, some move-forward items, and then we have another meeting at one, so, you know, I'd like to try to wrap up in about 30 minutes, but I want to open it up to any other public comment here, for anybody that hasn't had a chance to speak that wants to comment on this item. Just don't forget to state your name and...
I'm not talking.
Okay. I, I want to thank everybody here, all the stakeholders, for the time and effort in this report. It's been a great conversation. I think, you know, I would ask the commission to, you know, if they would like to make some statements and, and set some go-forward items. And I certainly have a few, but Commissioner Sellers, do you want to start, or Commissioner Hurst, are you ready to say a few words, or...
Well, I, I think in total, I'd like to digest what's been said today. One item of interest in the document, you have the high hazard areas of nine listed, Adam, and then it says that since 2009, there's probably some other areas. If there's other areas that would be considered high hazard, I'd like to know what those are at this point, and you can send that to us later. Knowing that anytime you change zoning regulations in the zoned area, you're going to have huge controversies, but I, I think I tend to think that we need to start allowing houses to be developed on larger pieces of property rather than smaller pieces of property, which is discussed in this document, I think. And then how those are developed, I think, has, has a meaning to me. And I think that that could be researched and better developed by the Planning Department and the Planning Commission than us, maybe. But I think, obviously, you've got to have, give the fire department access to the properties, and we've been remiss on letting things happen that doesn't give them access appropriately. So I, I, that intrigues me. I think maybe the software that Adam was talking about could be a good key to help mitigate this, and hopefully that could, if it's done correctly, the different departments would be notified of these permits.
Sure.
I, I think there's some very good ideas in this document. I think that the kind of response to Dr. Sanders and, and some of the things, we can make all kinds of regulations, but the people that don't abide by those regulations, we're still going to have issues. And the people that, Dr. Sanders, that live next to you, that tell you that they're not going to cut their trees down, we're, we're still going to have issues. And, but I would hope that we can work on this little by little, because we've allowed it to go on for 50 years, and it's going to take us 25 years to rectify it. So it's, it's not a short-term policy.
Commissioner Hurst?
Reno County is a very diversified county. I would say that other counties are. What's applicable in the Sand Hill area is not applicable in, in many other areas of the county, just because of the geography. And I'm thinking of CRP and pasture burning, that's done every so often. And our volunteer fire departments and the burn associations do an extremely good job with that. No matter what happens, occasionally, one of them's going to get away, no matter what you've done. I've had it happen to me. Everything was there, but it, it happened. But it's a necessary thing to do, and, and I just think we can't develop a specific policy. We need to be careful developing a specific policy that applies to one area of the county and make it apply to the whole county. So I just think that's one thing we need to look at. And I certainly thank everybody for coming and putting input in, and the things that you all are doing, that the Hutch Fire Department is doing with regards to looking at things and making suggestions.
Thank you, Commissioner Hurst. I, I think there are some things that we can set in motion today to make this a worthwhile effort. Sometimes you have these study sessions, and there's a lot of great comments made, and then nothing ever happens. So I don't want that to happen today. This is too important of a discussion. I, you know, I, I heard from both commissioners that, if I can interpret, one of the things that has made us unsuccessful in the past is that we have county-wide policy, and there may need to be some more granular application of restrictions in areas of high risk. I think it was identified here that we have different risk zones. So, Adam, I don't know if it's possible to work with stakeholders to get us a map that identifies these general zones of high risk, medium risk, and low risk, so we could use that in the discussion? Is that something that...
Yeah, we could work with the Forest Service and see how quick they can get a report out to us and keep that report, that map as well.
No problem. Just transferred responsibility for...
I think, I think you're, there, there are a number of recommendations in here that we need to act on. I think your point about classifying properties as kind of this red, yellow, green is going to make a lot of sense and make it more real to landowners, you know, especially if there's something, you know, a comment related to, hey, if you're a red labeled property, there's a high likelihood we won't be able to save your home in the event of a fire. And so I would encourage you, Adam, to bring back a recommendation for us to act on, on how, I, I heard we need an outside party to do that. If you can work with stakeholders to bring that back to us, I think there would be interest in considering approval of, of a classification of high-risk properties in the county. Related to ordinance changes, again, I think, I don't know if you, you have a task force? Is this an informal group? Do you just, is there a group that...
This group that, that... It's a pretty informal group. We, we brought all kinds of people in, basically, for talking about that certain topic that day. We'd ask that person to come talk with us.
Well, I guess we'll leave it up to the county administration on how to handle, but I'd like to, so long as there's consensus here, I'd like to charge the county administrator and, and the, the emergency management director with, with bringing back a revised set of ordinances based on this recommendation for us to consider. I know that may be a, a multiple, may have multiple iterations of, of changes in that over time, but it looks like, it sounded like we had consensus on a number of, you know, adding some teeth to some of the kind of individuals that are, that are not acting in, in good faith on, on fire management issues. So is there consensus to direct administration on that?
I don't know just exactly what you're asking for on that.
Well, let me be a little more clear. I'd like Adam and whoever else, Fire Chief and Randy and...
Fire Administrator.
Fire Administrator and legal counsel to take, there are a number of references related to recommendations for changes in our existing ordinance. I'd like them to go back and, and make a recommendation to us.
As our burn policy resolution, or whatever you call an ordinance.
Resolution, ordinance, city, county, talk, but resolution. Is there consensus there to get that moving?
Yes. With me.
I think there's very little. We, there are a few items in there that I can suggest, the rest of it's pretty plain.
Adam, do you think you could bring that back in a month?
Yeah, I think there are just some minor changes to it, and it should be easy to bring back to you.
Okay. I would also like to see if there's consensus here amongst the commission to have the zoning staff kind of collect the conversation here, bring back a potential list of items that zoning could, could consider in its work, the zoning and planning commission. And I'd like to see that and provide a little input before that goes to them, so that the, the request would be for, for zoning staff to bring recommendations for study to the planning commission, and, and we can provide some additional input on that. Is there consensus there on that item?
Yeah, in a work-study session.
Okay. So we'll, we'll provide some input and let them do their work on that. That sounds good. Is, I know, okay, so the big one, the big issue here is mitigation of fuel, right? And that sounds like it's going to cost money. So what we didn't really get in here is how much you need and how we're going to spend it. And so I, again, would, Adam, can you get with your... And so I, again, would, Adam, can you get with your team and bring back to us, like, a first set of recommendations on, here's the kind of money we have to spend, here's what we have to purchase in order to start working on fuel mitigation?
So I would need that scoped a little bit tighter to figure out if we're looking at getting on private property to mitigate fuels on private property, if we're looking at solely fire breaks, if we're looking at some other sort of mitigation measures, such as putting out, just like in a large incinerator dumpster where people can dump the brush into it and it incinerates and do like weekend projects.
I think you need to go all out and give us the full list. And, you know, it's going to be more expensive than we can afford, but it's a good starting point, and we, you know, we're going to have to cut it down to fit in our budget. But I'd love that you're all the options. I mean, the point Dusty made about, I know it was a state number, but $30 million, you know, we are, we are, it is costing the state and county and the taxpayers to fight fires and replace buildings and insurance premiums and everything else. And so I think it's just a factor that we have to spend some money to prevent these issues from going forward. So making recommendations on what we have to do to get in front of this thing is going to be important.
Where are you going and where are we going to stop with that?
I just want to hear the whole list. Probably going to be $50 million or something crazy, but it's, we've got to start somewhere. Is that, is that okay to keep talking about it? Like, that was the number one thing I heard. Like, we got to get rid of the fuel, and it's going to be expensive.
I don't know.
I have a little bit of a problem with just blanketing, saying we're going to spend money to get rid of fuel before we know where we're going, and that's on individuals' property. And I'm not sure that I can distinguish between who gets the money and who doesn't get the money. That's my problem, is spending taxpayers' dollars for just an individual, or two or three, or half a dozen, or 50. That's where my problem comes in with this idea of spending taxpayers' money for a few. And so that's where, I just, we'll discuss about that later, but you might as well know that upfront.
No, but I think it's important not to put a barrier on an idea, you know, ahead of hearing about it. So, you know, I think we need to hear all the ideas and then, you know, bring up the fact that there's property rights concerns.
I don't want to waste time doing some of that.
So, okay. Commissioner Sellers?
Is it potentially possible, Adam, to buy equipment that could be moved to a property owner's field that would burn that field after it's cut down?
I don't know, is it burn the field, is, after it's burned down?
After it's cut down. Are there huge incinerator available that could be moved around the county to...
So I don't know. Do you know the cost of that, Rodney?
So the demonstration that I remember being at was something like $5,000 a day, and it's very, I mean, it very is similar to what you were talking about, a big incinerator that can actually track through and pick up brush piles, put them in there, and it comes out in an area the size of an iPad, you know. So it, incinerator is the right word.
The incinerator we saw, the byproduct of it was biochar, and essentially goes into a bucket full of water, and then that biochar spread across farmers' fields.
$5,000 a day, I think, is what it was.
And then I think we need, we need to encourage our media folks to, I'm sure we have something on our website, and I know we can do more, like, how do we, like, put out some videos, like, interview Chloe, and just like triple our efforts in communicating the education piece? That seems like a cheap thing that we already, we already have resources to do that with. So those are my thoughts. Any closing comments from commissioners?
No, I think this has been a very productive meeting.
Yeah. Certainly thank everybody's attendance and participation today and all the efforts, and it's unfortunate that we're here in some respects, but I'm glad the community's coming together to help solve this issue, and we want to make sure you guys stay engaged. And I don't know if there's a way to create a little more of a formal task force that meets quarterly or something, just to keep the ball rolling. Adam, you might consider something there.
I think for the time being, we'll probably, we can meet in our monthly meetings and ask the council to have a little more quarterly.
Okay. Well, thank you again, everybody, for being here. We do have a joint meeting with the city at 1:00 PM today, so I'll go ahead and adjourn and see you, Commissioner, back here at 1:00.